Again, to say that the principal argument is the seaward expansion in a time of climate change should be rejected is too general to use for the zoning board, I think that's an oversimplification of the Planning Department's recommendations. Again, part of what the Planning Department and through in the zoning board and the special permit standards has been referenced a little bit earlier is to shape the group of a community in the most appropriate way possible. And take a look at the purposes of zoning in 255-111 of the town code where it does speak specifically to the protection of flood and the protection of natural resources. And couple that with your special permit standards to determine if this application meets those standards.
But how do we weave in climate change, although it's wise to think about it and to prepare for it, but how do we weave climate change into the code?
I'm not sure that you necessarily have to. I think you have to evaluate this application against the special permit standards that you have in the town code. You have up here kind of graphic evidence about the vulnerability of the property.
That's my point.
And then, I don't think it's inaccurate or hyperbolic or an exaggeration to say whatever you see here right now is likely to be more severe as we learn more about and as we see what the effects of climate change are going to be. And not even, take climate change out of it for the moment, although I guess it's hard to. Sea level rise, the location of the mean high water and the extent of inundation when you do get a storm. We've all been to the beach, I'm sure Mr. Gibson will tell you as a surfer and a windsurfer, there are hurricanes that are hundreds of miles out in the Atlantic Ocean that bring wave action up to the toe of the dune all over the Atlantic Ocean Beach. So if sea level is either inches or even a foot higher than what it is right now, it's a direct cause and effect. To suggest that it's not, the properties like this are not going to be more vulnerable in the future would really ignore a lot of sound science. And maybe that's the role of addressing sea level rise or climate change in your evaluation. I think that's mostly everything. Obviously, if a scenic easement which is supposed to conserve the dune is a natural feature, both as a natural protective feature and as a natural habitat protected by the town code, if it's going to allow a rock revetment or a sea wall to be incorporated into it, then that's kind of incompatible with the purposes of establishing a conservation easement in the first place. So if that's the caveat to having one, then I would respectfully suggest there's no point in bothering. Hopefully, this property never gets to that stage, but if this ever did erode severely, presumably you'd have to look at retreat. And Zaleski's wouldn't be the only ones in that boat. But it would be, in conclusion, I do want to say that I think it would be a shame to start seeing things get closer to the feature that is not only a natural habitat, a protected natural feature, a big part of the identity of this town, but also a hazard. A hazard to property, a hazard to human life, and something that you try to minimize those two coming together under those circumstances. I think that's it. I think, you know, coming back to something that Mr. Gibson said when the Fordune was a little bit eroded, or when this area flooded from the north after 38, he kind of said that where the house is now is the safest place to build. And that's kind of the Planning Department's point in the concerns raised in the environmental assessment or the Type 2 memorandum.
Just why do you think that was carved out of the cobra?
I think cobra zones avoided areas that were developed at the time that they imposed the zone. Because if you take a look all over Long Island where they are established, that's what they did. They have these right angles and these hard lines that obviously don't reflect natural geographic contours or any other feature except to carve out blocks. Believe it or not, most of Dune Road in Hampton Bays and East Quogue is not in a cobra zone despite its obvious apparent suitability for it. Because a lot of it was developed, in my opinion.
Any other questions for Brian?
No.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Okay. We all set? Hey, Rick.
Good evening again. Richard Whalen, also the attorney for the applicant, Michelle Zaleski. I am being paid. Sorry, Craig. Three broad areas I'd like to address. The first two, I hopefully fairly quick, and then the last one, I want to just speak to what Brian just spoke to you about. First of all, a question about this survey. And Craig, if necessary, can retestify about this. Craig did the closing on the property. The survey is based in deed that the current owner got. So that survey is based on an actual deed. There is a deed, and that's where the survey goes off. I can't explain the discrepancy with the zoning code, I mean, sorry, with the tax map. The tax map is, of course, never definitive evidence of ownership. That's what your deeds are for, so that's all I can tell you on that. On the scenic easement, provided that the project that we're proposing is approved, we would, you know, reluctantly, we would probably agree to a scenic easement that doesn't allow erosion control structures. But before you jump at that offer, I want you to consider some things. First of all, Andrew didn't really tell the full extent earlier when he discussed the town's ability to modify easements. The town board only has the power to modify or amend a scenic easement or extinguish a scenic easement after a full public referendum. That's in the town code. Chapter, it used to be chapter 22, I think it's, I forget, it's now chapter 2216? Chapter 16 of the town code. Thank you very much. Chapter 16 says that the town can only modify, amend, or extinguish a scenic or conservation easement after the holding of a full public referendum. That's a big deal. And for that reason, no one has ever attempted it. No one's ever attempted to amend any of the hundreds, if not thousands, of scenic easements that we have. Most of these scenic easements are in inland areas. They protect a whole variety of things. They protect wetlands, they protect other natural resources, they protect scenic wooded corridors, they protect buffers between properties. Many, many scenic easements in the town. What I fear is that boards will overshoot their mark, overreach, and require scenic easements with restrictions that in some future event, society will not be able to accept. If we have erosion so severe that this house is in danger, a lot of other dominoes are going to fall first. And one of those dominoes is if you've required scenic easements that prohibited erosion control structures elsewhere in the town, what the town board is going to have to do is they're going to go in and they're going to amend chapter 16. And they're going to remove the provision that says you have to have a public referendum first. Because they'll have no choice. You'll have situations in which an existing recorded legal instrument, a scenic easement, prohibits an action which we presume at that time, most parties will agree is necessary. So I don't think it's wise. If you want a scenic easement, certainly, we have no difficulty granting one as long as we reserve the right to a walkway to the beach, and we would like to reserve the right to, you know, an erosion control structure. If you have a problem...
Do you recognize the planning board's decision that I was talking about?
I'm sorry?
When the scenic easement and erosion control structure came in?
In Wayansville? As the law? Yeah, I think I did see that go through. I didn't think that was very wise. I didn't think it was wise. I can tell you, in the old days, 1990s, 1980s, it was fairly common for scenic easements along the water to allow for erosion control structures. The idea being that it was deferred to some future body. And if circumstances warranted, let them make the decision. So, you know, we'll live with whatever you decide. You know, if you want it, we'll grant it to you. I just don't think it's wise. I mean, I think you're setting up a situation where 150 years from now, circumstances are going to be a lot different, and there's going to be a demand to break the easements. And if you do that, it's not going to apply here. If you take away the public referendum requirement, geez, anyone anywhere could ask to amend their scenic easement. And I just don't think that's a wise idea. So, you know, enough said at that point.
What are you saying?
You're saying that you will offer the scenic...
We'll offer the scenic easement. If you want a scenic easement that forbids an erosion control structure, we'll allow that to be in there. We don't think you should do that. We're not going to propose it. We all know this is something that's not going to be done in the near future. Could it be necessary 175 years from now? We don't, as Brian has emphasized today, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what's going to happen. Suppose there is massive erosion coastal sea level rise, what will be the public response to that? We don't know. It may be some sort of, you know, hardened devices on or off the shore. Maybe there'll be breakwaters. We don't know. We don't know. You know? And I think, you know, to my mind, you defer that to the wisdom of a future age when they're dealing with the reality at that time. I just don't think you should address it today. But, look, is it going to affect Michelle Zaleski in the short term? No. He's not going to put in a, you know, revetment. We don't foresee this happening in, probably in any of our lifetimes. But the long term, it might happen. And that's why I don't think it's a good idea. But we'll defer to your wisdom on that point. The last thing, of course, is the issue of the location of the house. And I'm going to make this quick because it is late. You know, Roy asked Brian a few moments ago, how do you weave climate change into the current town code? In other words, I think you meant to say, how do you integrate it into the decision-making you're doing today? We only need a natural resources special permit. We don't need any variances. All right? So my answer to that is, you don't weave it in. That's for the town board to do. That's for legislative bodies to do. The town board has enacted a pretty sophisticated, much more than the DC, a pretty sophisticated system of coastal protection. We set setbacks that are based upon, the setback, of course, doesn't vary depending on where you are in town, but the setback is based upon the primary dune or the bluffage. And the primary dune or the bluffage can move and often do move. And when they move, it resets the setback. In other words, the town is regulating things in real time. Now, of course, it's true, you can build a house today that's 100 feet from the dune crest, and maybe, you know, 40 years from now, it's only 60 feet from the dune crest. You know, c'est la vie. And there's only so much you can do. But at least the town has got a mobile requirement, and it tries to deal with things. The DC, the CHA line hasn't been amended until it was adopted in 1989, or '87, whatever year it was. Your system is a lot better, the town system. Having said that, here's the issue for you as well as for us. We've put the house in a particular location. The house is 124 feet from the dune crest that Brian has identified as the primary dune crest. And I'm not going to challenge that now. Well, we'll, you know, we'll accept that. I mean, I'm not sure that he's read the code correctly, but, you know, we don't need to go there. The primary dune crest flagged by the planning department, the house, nearest point to the house is 124.5 feet from that. The nearest point to the pool patio is, I think, 103.5 feet. We meet the town's dune crest setback. We're outside of CHA. Yes, we're surrounded by a cobra zone, but there's nothing about the cobra zone that forbids what we're doing. We're in a velocity zone. The velocity zone requires certain construction techniques and certain elevations with which we comply. This is the essential problem. The natural resources special permit standards say, by reference to the general purposes of the code, that when you approve something, it should be reasonably safe from storm and flooding damage. I forget the exact wording, but it's essentially reasonably safe from flooding and erosion or flooding and storm damage. Under all the legislative or regulatory enactments, regulatory in the case of the DC, legislative in the case of the town code, we comply. You're in a position of saying, well, you're not, how are you going to say we're not reasonably safe? We're, the only, you know, Brian's essential point is that we shouldn't get any further than we were in 1941. And in 1941, you know, 1941's determination was made by somebody without any zoning, without reference to the zoning code. It's more or less an arbitrary decision. They obviously put the house high on the dune, and that's where we want to stay. The house is only going to move, the addition to the house is, you know, the replacement house moves modestly seaward, still is 25, 125 feet approximately landward of the required setback. By all reasonable measurements, we are reasonably safe from flooding and erosion. I don't think you can make a contrary determination under the natural resources special permit standards. As Andrew had pointed out, we're reducing clearing on the property by some 2,500 square feet or more. Michelle is very, very respectful of this environment, this lot. We're doing everything we can to minimize disturbance during and after the construction process. It's a reasonable application. I don't think we have to say that we're limited to the exact footprint or the exact setback that existed when the house was built in 1941. Looking at it from a broad perspective, we're acting reasonably. Are we safe? We're reasonably safe. We are some 250 feet landward of the beach grass line, which is what I measure from. You can't really use, you know, the mean high water line in any particular day or in any particular time when a survey, it moves. You know, you don't even know whether they did it at high tide or low tide. But the beach grass line tends to move much more slowly. The beach grass line that we are referring to is really, well, the beach grass line in, on the aerial photographs is from 2013. In other words, from right after Hurricane Superstorm Sandy, which was in the fall of 2012. So we're 300 feet seaward of the approximately high watermark, we're 250 feet landward of the beach grass line, we're 125 feet landward of the town's dune crest setback, even under the planning department's evaluation of where that dune crest is. All I can say is, by all objective measurements, we're reasonably safe from flooding and erosion. I don't think the board has the discretion to be able to find otherwise. And, you know, I would ask you to approve the project. I think it's a good project environmentally. It's, you know, it's not out of character for the area. It's actually landward of three of the four neighboring houses in this community, and I think it certainly complies with the natural resources special permit standards.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have one comment, Rick, and I'm not disagreeing with anything that you're saying. I'm just looking at H, and I don't see the word reasonably safe. It says secure safety. But I'm not saying that this project doesn't do that. I just want to point that out.
I'd have to see the code, and I don't...
I don't see, I'm looking at H, health and safety, to secure safely from fire, panic, flood, storm, and other dangers. I'm not seeing reasonable. But that's just a minor, it's just...
But reasonable is implied. The board must always act reasonably, so the word reasonable is implied.
Yeah, just...
Okay? It doesn't mean guaranteed against all events, including asteroid strikes. You know, we're reasonably safe.
I am worried about that.
We should all be worried about that. All right?
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You have to come to the microphone, please.
My name is Bill Ryall. I'm the architect for the...
Can you spell your last name, please?
R-Y-A-L-L. And I'm the architect with the project, and I'm for the Zaleskis. And also, my associate, Niall Carroll, is here. And our office address is 45 West 21st Street in New York, though I also live in Orient on the North Fork. But I just wanted to say, our little part about the environmental issues and the fact that we also feel like we do as much as we possibly can as far as that is concerned because, and the owner, too, has gone along with our little program, which is that we really are designing to the most, to lowest-low energy buildings on the face of the earth today. We're following the German, now the EU, code for construction, which will go into effect next year, which uses about one-tenth of the energy of a house that's typically built in America today. So as a consequence of that, and we build walls that are this thick with insulation, triple-pane glass, we put in fresh air by capture, and capture the dirty air, 90% of the heat when we throw the dirty air out. And this is the building code of the EU. We're in the dark ages here by comparison. And our owner has happily gone along with this program of ours. But as a consequence, it does have an environmental impact right here in that the building is actually net zero on an annual basis. The solar panels make all of the electricity for what you plug in, as well as all the heat and air conditioning for the building. So we're kind of used to working this way, and this is our contribution to doing the best we can. But also, we've been working on the project for the last year, and we take all of the zoning very seriously. And we really did incredibly careful analysis of the zoning and the section through the site at all points of the building, and really, we're following the setbacks and the 45 degrees. And we thought, well, we're really, like, within it. We're not pushing anything. We're really within it. And so we've made a huge investment of time and energy and seriousness in following the codes and the environmental issues of the town and preservation of the dunes. So we just don't know what else we could have done because, in fact, if there had been nothing built on this land, it was, if it were vacant land, we couldn't even talk about this house being now, whatever feet it is, closer to the sea than the existing house is that was built in 1940. So we're just not used to how, we don't know how to deal with that standard, you know, following. And if we had known at the beginning, you must build no closer than where the existing house is, we might have had to design a different house than we've been working on for the last year.
So what drove you to move the house forward 35, 40 feet?
Well, it was, we were just thinking of the building envelope, you know, saying, the existing house is gone, is, will be gone, will be gone. And we also, considering the aesthetics of the building and the site, we really avoided a big, massive house, which is pushed right into the center of the building envelope, which is often the case. And we have it, something that, a building that you see through the center of, that sort of follows the length of the lot with smaller buildings. Like, they're not even too, they're one room thick to maximize light and air everywhere and to minimize the impact of a building on the property, to keep the scale of the elements low. And also, to see through the center of the building, both from the, which is the living room, but it's largely glazed, that part only. And so you really see through it, through the light, you see the light through the building from, when you're even walking the beach, you will see that. And you'll see it as you approach the house, too. So I just want to say, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, so.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Less than a minute, but I just wanted to make sure we cut the, get the record straight on the house, the residence. The house is moving 15 feet closer to the dune crest. The current setback is about 140 feet. The, it's moving, the proposed setback to the residence is 124.4 feet.
I meant the house and the pool.
Well, with the pool, that's a difference.
The limit of disturbing stuff.
And that's a different, that's a different analysis. But when you're talking about, you know, the safety of a residence, you know, that's a different, you know, it's not moving 40 feet closer to a hazard. You know, you're expanding the house, something like, you know, 15 feet closer, and then there's a proposed new accessory structure. So as long as, if...
Oh, I understand what you meant. I just wanted to make sure...
The whole project.
Just because of the way that the application has come before you, where there was an original application, where the house was closer to the dune crest, and it has since been moved back. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that point.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see. David?
Yeah. Want to make a motion? Sure. I'm going to make a motion to close the application of Michael, Michelle, and Caroline Zaleski, 75 Dune Lane, Amgenza, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-129-02-19.
Second? Concur.
Concur.
And I concur as well. Thanks, David. Okay. Thank you all for coming out. You'll hear from us within 62 days, okay?
Hey, Beth? Could you give me my little thumb drive down there before I forget it?
How come you didn't talk? How come you didn't talk?
Okay. It's late. 10:45?
10:42.
What's that?
I was having a...
What's that? Oh, yeah.
Let me see if we have anything important here.
Bullshit.
Okay.
Hey, Brian? Excuse me, Brian Frank?
Brian? Brian Frank?
What?
Paging Brian Frank.
Thanks, Beth.
My friends. Got to watch your friends.
Yeah.
What is your real name?
I was watching your friends' clothes or what?
I'm just wanting to see if there's anything, if there's anything really urgent we have to take care of on your behalf.
I'm a civil enterprise. I'd like to move forward if the board is comfortable with that.
Sure. Okay.
Which one is that?
Three Mile Harbor Marina.
What's seconds 55?
Yeah, that one I didn't, I didn't bring with me. But, you know, Three Mile Harbor Marina is a huge...
And Lisa's out, so a lot of these things are, Lisa's not here, so we'll...
Let's go on.
Sure.
All right. What are we doing?
Yeah.
John's going to read it.
Sure. Okay, let's go ahead. So we're doing, I have that on the, that's under, where we're looking for that.
Three Mile Harbor Marina.
Right there. Okay, great.
Let me leave the plans with, I don't really need them to address the...
It's amazing how I lose my work ethic.
Just leave this here so that you can see, there's a dredging, and then there's a profile as well.
Right. Okay. So we're going to skip down to the agenda, board members, if it's okay, to page two under board determinations. The first one is Three Mile Harbor Marina, tax map number 300-120-1-2, 3, 10, at 5, 2, and 6 Boatyard Road in Springs. And Brian, could you walk us through this here?
Sure. The Three Mile Harbor Marina is a property that was before you fairly recently as part of installation of a comfort station and the associated bathroom on a site plan that you included. Their application did ask for dredging, and I overlooked it. I wasn't really very, it didn't really stand out in the application. We had also issued other permits on the property, and I had believed that the dredging was covered under one of those permits. When I looked more closely and saw that it wasn't, we encouraged Seacoast Enterprise, Three Mile Harbor Marina, to get an application in. It's unfortunate, but we do have to process it as a separate application. But they are proposing to dredge to a depth of six foot at mean low water at a one-to-three slope to a depth of about four feet at the bulkhead, an area that has shoaled up just adjacent to the bulkhead of probably unsuitable material that has to just get disposed of. It's unlikely to be clean sand. Had this, had I had caught it with the last application, it would have been incorporated in the site plan that you looked at. The planning department doesn't have any objection to the application and thinks it's a good candidate for administrative review.
Are they going to do this before they do the bulkheading?
I think they're doing it in conjunction with the bulkhead.
Is there a protocol for getting rid of those dredge spoils, then?
It's going to have to get disposed of in an upland location or spread out on-site. There is, the DEC permit does allow them, I believe, gosh, you know, the Minneman's have so many marinas, sometimes it's hard to keep them straight.
De-watering at the, they do de-watering at the existing...
Well, their de-watering and some of their other permits have allowed them to spread the material on-site. I would have to check, they do have a DEC permit. We would probably follow the DEC disposal protocol, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you what that is without the permit in front of me.
And so they would need trustee permit?
I believe they have one already. They have trustee in DEC.
I'm okay with this moving administratively.
I am as well. I am as well.
So the question, is this moving administratively, or what are we removing?
Yes. That's what it's before you for.
So this gets to move down to admin. So this is a possible admin?
Correct.
So this is, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a possible admin. Okay.
So I'll make a motion in the matter of Three Mile Harbor Marina, Suffolk County Tax Map number 300-120-01-02-03, and 10, at 5, 2, and 6 Boatyard Road in Springs, to allow this application to move forward administratively.
Second? Concur.
And I concur as well. Thanks, Kate. Thank you, Brian. Okay, you can take that one back, Brian. Thank you. Okay.[1726.41] Okay. Board members, I recommend that we table the rest of the agenda, considering the late hour.
Can you just sign the extensions of time?
Okay.
Not too much.
And we have determinations?
And Beth has determinations.
Oh, we have determinations, too. Yep. So, let's do the extensions first.
Okay.
Okay. The first we have is a matter of AMMTK LLC, a tax map 300-13-1-22.1, 22.2. And this, this is a Montauk. I'll give that to board member Berger for that.
It's an extension of time.
Okay. I have to make a motion.
Yes.
Make motion to grant the extension of time for AMMTK LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-013-01-22.1 and 22.2.
Second? Concur.
Concur.
And I concur as well. Thank you, Terry. Next we have is also Montauk. This is a matter of Goldfish Lakefront LLC, tax map 300-13-1-23 and 9. This goes back to February 2013. I'll hand that down. Terry?
This is Roy?
No, just a sign.
No, I'm signing. Sorry.
Okay. For the application of Goldfish, the extension of time, I make a motion to grant the extension of time in the matter of the application of Goldfish Lakefront LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-013-01-23 and 9.
Second? Concur.
Concur.
And I concur as well. Thanks, Terry. Our final one is Jonathan Howard, tax map number 300-90-2-8.3. And this goes back to 2008 for a, to obtain a building permit, and this is in East Hampton. I'll pass that down to Roy. Pass that to you.
Make a motion to, in the application of Jonathan Howard, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-90-02-08.3, to approve this extension of time.
Second?
Concur.
Concur.
And concur. Thank you, Roy. Okay.
Oh, I haven't signed it.
Okay. And counsel, we have a few determinations?
Yep. We have three determinations for tonight. We have the application of Daniel Lester, Camelia Weinstein, and Merle Hoffman.
David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Beth. Okay. We'll start off, we'll start off with Merle Hoffman, tax map number 300-35-1-1.19.